Good evening. Welcome to the special session of the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees, Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. I'd like to call to order, Karen, can you do the roll, please?
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Present.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Queenie?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.1.3, Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Mahalik, could you lead us into pledge, please?
Oh, I would love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, Communications. Dr. Nemu, do we have any communications?
Chairman, I do not believe so.
Item 1.3, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Item two, Chair is requesting a closed session of the Board to discuss one or more items pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Illinois 120-2C1, 2C5, and 2C11.
That's not correct. The first one is just for 2C1 on the agenda, and then we're going back into open session, and then we're going back into closed session for 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11.
We are going to have 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11 in the first closed session.
No, we are not. That's not how the agenda was written.
The agenda was added, we added to the agenda for other people that are participating in the meeting.
Can I, everyone who is here, just so that you're aware, the way that the agenda was written, we were supposed to go into a closed session to do an interview with our legal counsel that we would like to hire, that I've had an agreeance on, and then after we come out of closed session, we're going to have a motion if we would like to approve them after the agenda, and then to go into closed session for the second portion, which was under, one of them is personnel, and we need a different lawyer to preside over that, seeing as how we will be talking about our legal counsel. So therefore, if everyone was okay, that's how, when I called the meeting, I intended to do it, and I communicated that with everyone here, and I'm not sure why Bazinski is trying to force us to go into 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11 with our current counsel. So if everyone is okay with it...
As a trustee, what gave you the right to go out and seek new counsel without ever discussing it?
What gave you the right to go out and seek new counsel once Carl and Klein, if there was supposed to be...
I didn't do that.
If there was supposed to be, yes, you did, you too went out and sought Carl without a board vote. So if you can do it, I can do it too, and everybody here wanted them to be here, and there was a consensus on that. So you are again trying to stop me from, I have talked to you multiple times about Brian's behavior, and you are trying to stop me. I've been talking to you about this since February, from bringing it to the Board in closed session and talking about this, and he cannot provide over this, Jim. So stop trying to stop us from hearing this.
Point of order, I make a motion for 2C1 to go into motion, to go into closed session.
Second.
Need a vote.
You can allow further discussion if you'd like, otherwise you go to the vote.
The discussion is that a member of this Board went out, has invited another firm into this meeting without ever having a discussion openly with this Board.
Because you would not allow me to. I've requested you to go into closed session for this, for our legal counsel since February.
Excuse me, I wasn't finished. Your role as a trustee is not to act...
Your role as a Chair is to be the Chair of this Board, and not to be Klein's best friend, and protect him, or Brian.
So you're going to start the meeting with the text.
You won't let us go into closed session, so I can talk to my fellow trustees. We have a motion and a second on the table, so you can discuss. I'm done discussing.
I can also propose, I can also propose a counter proposal. Is that correct?
Yes.
So my proposal is that we have all three items at one time.
The motion's out there, though, as is.
That's okay. You can't change the agenda, so they, as far as the first closed session and the second closed session. So you're proposing the first, or you're proposing to what Jim is saying, to have all three of them at the same time versus allowing our new counsel to preside over the meeting for our current counsel?
There's a lot of things there that I'm not going to go into detail right now, but yeah, there's a lot of things there. Doesn't mean that we're actually going to approve new counsel.
From what I can see, the way that this agenda reads, we have a closed session of the Board to discuss one or more items in the, according to the Open Meetings Act, for 2C1 through 29, which covers everything.
And I sent an email to Jim this morning, when he asked, requesting, I sent an email to him this morning stating we would be going into 2C1, then we would be coming right back out and going for, to approve the counsel if we so choose, and then we would be going back into closed session under 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11, and he tried to stop me from having this meeting and told me I had no right to do this.
Show us the email where I tried to stop you.
We failed an OMA violation because of you and your tactics with Brian.
Can we not go into all of that right now? I think that's a conversation...
That can't even be talked about in closed session, because it's already finalized. We cannot talk about it unless it's an actual pending case. So the one we failed has to be talked about in an open session, unfortunately, because they didn't bring us into closed session to tell us about it in the first place. Goodness, this is a hot mess. We have a motion and a second on the table, so can you start the timer for discussion, because per our policy, everyone is only supposed to have five minutes to talk per person?
Before we entertain bringing on a new firm, we should have had a discussion in the Board...
You were right, you should have allowed us to.
Excuse me, the timer's on me now, since you insist on the timer. The Board should have had a discussion about bringing on a new attorney. You wanted to fire everybody, so if we had a meeting every time you want to get rid of somebody, all we would be is in special sessions. So we are going to have a conversation under 2C1. We will start with your 2C1 if everyone is in agreement with that. But we are not entertaining a new attorney until this Board discusses it.
Well, Jim, maybe you should have been in contact once you knew that we were calling a special meeting, because there was a lot of rigmarole that went on, as far as the Chair would not call the meeting, would not do anything, that we went back and forth with requesting, and even though they said support, the support word wasn't good enough. It seems like there's been a lot of lack of communication, as I shared with you when we had our Friday meeting, in regards to what we need to do, and we brought up the subject when I asked, when I had said Michelle called me, and you guys kind of laughed at me when it was said that, oh, she's trying to fire the attorney.
That is not what happened. Do not sit here and lie. That is not the conversation we had. We told you what she was calling you for. We never called you.
Brian said that.
No.
Oh, they're trying, she's trying to fire me. She laughed.
No, that is not it at all, because that wasn't even what we were meeting for. We told you what she called for. You asked, was she calling because of this meeting, and we told you no.
And it was said in there, oh, she's trying to fire me, and it was a laugh. So I still know what I thought.
You know what? That was not said in that room.
Okay.
The point is, is we have one trustee that's gone out, wants to change counsel without ever having a conversation with this Board. Now, you're telling me my communication was horrible? Every time she... Stop. Every time she called me, all she did was scream at me and then hang up. Anytime I tried to say something, I was being accused of being a good old boy and supporting them. All I wanted, and all I was trying to ask her for, is she's got all these complaints about these two gentlemen, but we have never had a chance to address it with them. They have never been in front of us to talk about any of these issues. All we've gotten, we walked...
I'm sorry, but no, you restarted his time, and you, because he already, yeah, he had started the minute, and so what's that clock over there?
She hit it.
Okay.
That's the time remaining.
So we walked out of the last Board meeting, and you're taking all this information, you're calling everyone, and you're telling me everyone agrees, everyone agrees. Well, I find out, because I'm talking to the same people, nobody agreed.
Really?
You said I agreed. The reason, and Maureen, going back to you, is it takes three people to, per our policy, to request a special meeting. I can do it, or three people could do it. Karen was in her right. Karen did not have the names of the three people requesting this meeting. That is what her pushback was. She kept asking, who were the three meetings?
Why wouldn't you call the meeting?
Because you would never let me talk. You would never let me talk, and I was...
No, you have not let me talk to this Board about Brian's behavior, ever, or the Arcus, or any legal complaints that I have ever had. You have never, I have requested of you and Klein multiple times. I have text messages with Klein saying I'm having problems on the Policy Committee. So you can't sit here and tell me that I have not requested of both of you, and spoken to every single person on this Board, and told you that I have been having problems with Brian. Are we going to talk about Policy 3.20.00, where this entire Board sat there and there was an eight-to-zero vote against his opinion? We're not going to talk about that. We're not going to talk about all the legal messes that he's gotten.
What vote against his opinion?
For the Student Trustee Scholarship, and his opinion that it was illegal.
That was, yeah, we never had that conversation here where we took a vote on that. So you went out on your own, you sought legal counsel. You did not have the authority of this Board to represent this college and go investigate replacing counsel without ever having a conversation in closed session with us.
I had a conversation with everybody here, and you have avoided, and you have not allowed me to go into closed session, which is why I had to get three people to call this meeting.
You had to get three people to call this meeting, because that's policy. I was not going to call it, because you never let me talk. All you did was scream at me, and I asked you multiple times to stop.
You can continue to say that.
This is exactly what I dealt with on the phone.
You can continue to say that, as if that's true, Jim, but you know very well, you started screaming at me first.
I never had a chance to talk to you. All you did was scream, and you went off the wall on me.
I asked you if you knew about the Title IX complaint, and you told me you didn't, and I said, you sat up in there in that office and talked about Maureen, but you knew that this was important, and you didn't go, and you didn't go back and talk to Klein and Brian about it. So you clearly didn't care about what this Board thought about this decision.
That still doesn't...
This discussion is supposed to be a motion and a second, and I mean, this is, you've had your five minutes now, so can we go down the line and ask if anybody else would like their five minutes?
I understand what 2C1 is. Can, somebody refresh my memory, 2C5 is, you have it here? Okay, let me see. Hold on.
Purchase of real estate.
Real estate.
Okay, and then 2C11?
Litigation, pending litigation.
Okay. So I understand Chairman wants us to go in for 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11, which we can talk about all those three topics.
Yes, however, our, however, Brian will have to preside over that, and he is part of the personnel that we will be talking about.
I mean, well, he has to be there.
By the way, yeah.
He shouldn't be presiding over something if we're talking about his mistakes.
If I may, there is no law that requires counsel to be in the room while you're in closed session. So if you, I can be there for part of it. If you want to ask me to leave for part of it, that's fine, too, but there's nothing that requires that.
So we can move forward the way it is with you outside the meeting?
Well, right now, it's just for 2C1, so...
No, then we would not have, can we, I, so everything that I spoke to everyone on this Board about is, now you are going back on that, you do not want to hire a new firm?
No, no, no. Hold on.
I need, I explain this to you, Alicia. I need 2C1, then we have an action item, and then it's 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11.
Correct.
So why are we, we have a motion and a second on the table to go into closed session for 2C1. So I'm just wondering why things are changing when we're getting here.
No, 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 they're not changing. We're going to go in for that, 2C1.
Only the first, that's what the motion, and the second is on the table right now, for to only go in for 2C1.
I see that, I hear that, but I'm here, it's 1 through 29. That's what parts of the...
Right, because I didn't know exactly which one to call for, and so now this is where...
That's standard language.
Yes, but we can still reach that objective. If, I know you spoke with a lot of Board members, probably every Board member, but we need to have a conversation together, and our attorney can wait outside, but we have the conversation together. You already spoke with everybody. Let's have a conversation together, please.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the table right now, so can we please finish the discussion and go through the motion and the second?
No discussion for me.
No discussion.
No discussion for me.
So for clarification, the motion is to go into executive session solely for the purposes of 2C1?
Correct.
And I think you would agree to it, that Dr. Nemu, Dr. Farmer, and our attorney would all have a chance to speak at the beginning of 2C1?
Yeah, that's, I literally, that's, that's the plan, yeah. But either way, this is 2C1 for our counsel. This is not 2C1 for, to speak to Dr. Farmer and Dr. Nemu and Brian.
No, that's got to go first.
No, it doesn't. It does not. That's why the motion is on the table, for 2C1 to speak, to hear our interview of our guests, who deserve to have their, not have their time wasted while we're in closed session. So can we please, there is a motion and a second, to go into 2C1 to have an interview with our legal counsel, with our possible new legal counsel?
I don't support you bringing in somebody without us all.
We've already gone through the discussion. Per policy, we are at the point where you are done with your five minutes, and everyone else has said they are not done with discussion. We are at the motion and the vote. Please call the roll. Point of order, please call the roll.
Who we come in here with.
Point of order, please call the roll.
I would like to say, I think, it's great that you went out. We had to, we do all have to be together. This is just, you interviewed one firm. How do we know this is the best friend for us?
Well, this was on the other one.
I am at the point of time right now. My five minutes is going right now. Please, you're yelling at everyone else, but we got to go out, this has got to be a group effort. I'm glad you did a bunch of research. I'm glad Maureen, Polly, and everyone else said their own things, but as a group, we need to be together. We need to decide this. I believe Alicia believes that, too, Nancy believes that. Do you guys want someone to do a solo interview and do everything? I know we vetted them before, but this is a group effort, and you can't raise your voice at me anymore. I'm done. Anyone else in this room, let's not raise our voice. We're here to have a civil discussion. This is going to be a civilly run meeting. No one's screaming and yelling at anyone, okay?
And I just want to respond to you, Jake.
Yes.
Okay. When we interviewed RCK, it was the Board that did that. The Board is the one that made the decision by interviewing all the candidates. This go-around, we did not have that ability to do. It was taken away from us, because the ones who'd interviewed were Dr. Farmer, Dr. Nemu, and Jim, and apparently the vote was done by them on who they recommended. The second recommendation was for Robin Schwartz. The thing is, when you look at the resumes, and I do question the selection...
I understand that. I haven't looked at the resumes, so there's kind of the other resumes. I know that you guys are saying that they made the decision, which is great, but I didn't look at the resumes. Alicia, did you look at the resumes of all the other people? No?
We aren't allowed to, because they didn't put us in the committee.
I'm sorry, I'm still talking. Please. You can yell at anyone for talking over you. I can yell at you for talking over me. So I think we need to all sit back, and I think this is a process. I'm not hiring anyone tonight. I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second on the table. We're completely off of policy right now. Can we just call the roll?
I know, I know.
If we can go into closed session to discuss the issues together as a Board, I think we should definitely have that conversation. We're all elected people. We all have to be on the same page, at the same time having the same conversation, and make decisions together. If we can do that, that's all I have to say for discussion.
Will we allow, under 2C1, then, to allow them to come in and give us their presentation, as I planned on doing? Because they were invited guests.
Inviting who to come in?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Can we please just call the roll? Or is there no, no, you're not going to call the roll at all for the motion and the second? We're going to sit here all night?
Trustee Broderick asked a question. I think in all fairness, if we are going to judge anybody, we should allow them, they gave us information at a meeting that we have never discussed. We have never had presented to us. She's going off the record, contacting people to replace people before. We've had a chance to let them answer to us. They've never answered to us. We've never heard an explanation for decisions that were made. I think as a Board, we should be able to address the issue, not just fire somebody and bring in new people right away.
That's funny, because on our September 13th meeting, we had Delgado Law Group, KGG, Oldison Murphy, Fraser McGrath of Evergreen Park, Ogletree Deacons of Birmingham, Alabama, Robin Schwartz of Chicago, and Tressler Bowling Brook. We never saw anything, because in the closed session, which we had a closed open meetings violation, it was identified that KGG should have been the only firm. We never saw any of the credentials, other than this is who was recommended by you, Dr. Nemu, and Dr. Farmer. So you did get to see the credentials, because you did interview, from what I understand, it was the three of you that made the vote. So to create, to get rid of the bias, Jim, you have already, you already know what their credentials are.
No, I do not.
So I guess I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking. So I guess I'm a little bit confused, when I am looking at the RFP that we didn't even approve to do an RFP back in July, and all of a sudden, we had all these things come in. We neglected with RCK to even communicate with them, and I've got the RFP here, and I'm just concerned as to how it went into the situation it did, when we really didn't even need a new attorney firm. We had a firm, we just lost an associate, and I'll still repeat that, because that was what was said in the closed session on September 13th, that we got fined with an OMA violation. And it wasn't the trustees, it was the fact that Carl and Dr. Nemu kept talking about the RFP. So let's get things straight of what has happened and what transpired, and they were under the RFP, and everything that they presented to us was given at that time. So we're still in the timeframes of them being acceptable. So I think that should be something that all of you are understanding, because when we had this last time, we interviewed everyone. It was the Board that hires the term. We hire the firm, and we didn't do it this time. All we did was approve what was recommended by the three of you, and I'm not making any negatives there. I'm just saying, the three of you, the Board did not get to do it.
And I didn't make any recommendations. I sat via Zoom and watched the last two interviews. That's all I did. I did not go through any of the applications. I never saw any of the documentation at all.
We're past policy again. Everyone has had their five minutes to speak. We have a motion and a second on the table. Can we just please call the roll and see if this is going to happen, because if it's not going to happen, we can let them go home.
Really quickly, if I can clarify something that's really important. In terms of the search process for the new attorney, specifically KGNG, it was a comprehensive search process that included not just Dr. Nemu, just not the Chairman, but it was a committee that included a lot of individuals within the college, specific departments, and I can provide that list of those individuals who served on that committee.
But I think, Dr. Farmer, the thing that we're concerned about is, it should have come before the Board, for them to have interviewed, because when you look at the qualifications of them, and the experience of higher education that they have, you weigh it out, cost versus amount of knowledge.
I was just clarifying that. It just wasn't...
I appreciate that, thank you.
It was a committee, institutional committee as well.
Would there be a big issue if we allowed them to come in and just let them present? And then after they present, we can go over the issues?
I think we should.
I mean, what do you think?
That's up to the Board.
They were on the, I, I was sick this time. I wasn't here at this meeting, but I do see that they were one of the candidates. So I guess, I don't know, it's up to the Board. If we just want to hear their presentation. I didn't hear it last time. I didn't see anything last time, because I was ill. What does the Board think?
So of the three, because it was said the three of you that voted on it, how did the vote come for KGG versus them? Because I'm confused as to how it came out of your committee on who recommended it, because I know that...
At this point, I have to suggest, way off the agenda. Yeah, I would, I'd like to just call for a vote. I would say that Trustee Harris has not been offered the opportunity to speak. I don't know if she has any comments or not. Then everybody will have had their chance to speak, and you can call for her vote.
I don't have anything to say right now.
So the vote on the table, or the motion is to go in under 2C1 only, to interview Robin Schwartz? Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen? If that's what you want to make the motion, you can. If the motion is just to go in under 2C1, the Board can decide, once they're in there, what topics they want to cover that will fall under 2C1. So as long as it applies to some exception under 2C1, as long as the Board's in general agreement, you can discuss all topics under 2C1 at that time. You don't have to limit it to the one. My understanding is that the motion right now is not limited in any way, other than just 2C1.
Okay. Karen, would you like to take the roll? The vote?
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
As long as that's, we're not going to take action right now, right, in the meeting, Brian? We can't.
You can't take action in a closed session.
Okay, yeah, if it's just, I mean, they were on the previous list of candidates, so I don't see any harm in conducting an interview. So yes.
Trustee Queenie?
I'm going to abstain from this.
Abstain? Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to return to general session?
So, second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, new business, 4.1, Board approval of legal counsel for the college.
I make a motion to move that Board approval for legal counsel to the May 22nd meeting.
Second. Discussion?
Vote.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, closed session. A closed session of the Board. I request a motion for a closed session under 2C1, 2C5, and 2C11.
We know now they're due to need 2C5. Our guests left. We took so long.
Is it only 2C1 and 2C11, then?
Okay. Need to make a motion?
Can we leave 2C5 on there and discuss why this was on the agenda to begin with?
We don't have the person to discuss it, so we can't go into closed session, I'm pretty sure, for something that was not, we can talk about it and discuss it in open session, if you'd like. So Mayor Brown had called me and let me know that he had tried to ask Klein to have, you know, an audience with the Board, and Klein denied him that audience with the Board, and I just figured, maybe we would like to hear what our other elected official said. So I mean, you know, I called everybody, and they had said yes about that. Clearly, we, you know, I don't know about any of the consensuses I'm getting anymore, so I will not be calling to get those.
Okay, so it'll just be 2C1 and 2C11, then?
So I think we should currently still have, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Chairman, may I?
Yes.
So the administration is hoping to bring our progress in regards to Grundy expansion to the Board as allowed under 2C5 to discuss both our progress in regards to the academic programs, and where we've landed, and the sites that we're currently exploring. So respectfully, Trustee Lee, none of that was, what you're saying was communicated to me. My full intent was to indeed provide Mayor Brown an audience with this Board, either in closed session or in open session, when the administration is ready to do so.
Why do we put 2C5, then, on for the executive session for the 22nd?
It is.
It is, okay.
It is.
Is Mayor Brown invited to speak to us about, as he has requested, an audience with his other elected officials? Have you granted him that audience to come and speak to us, so he can talk to us about what he sees for Grundy County and Morris as the Mayor? Is that something that you are interested in letting us hear from another elected official, or no? You just don't think we should hear from him?
Trustee Lee, can you repeat your question, please?
Do you plan on having Mayor Brown come to present next Wednesday, under 2C5, that you are going to present to us all of your options? Is he and what he was going to present to us a part of that option?
So when the administration's prepared to do so, we would love for this Board to have an audience with Mayor Brown. He's been a passionate advocate of the college. He's the incoming Foundation President, and a big fan of JJC. As we've crafted our vision for what an increased footprint slash presence might look like in Grundy County, as you might expect, we've engaged... in Grundy County, as you might expect, we've engaged a number of both elected officials, industry people, education partners, and so I fully anticipate Mayor Brown having an[1661.88]